At this time, I'll call the Pauling County Board of Commissioners work session to order on this December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. If the marshal bring bring the list forward if you have it prepared. And if you've got a device that might go off in the middle of the meeting, you might silence that. Thanks, sir. So great to have a full room in here. We haven't had one in a while. I guess it has something to do with pickleball. Don't watch out if you play racquetball. Make sure you wear a guard because I don't know if you can see my face, but I didn't wear one. So this is our pre-Christmas Board of Commissioners meeting. And so we're going to have Commissioner Dunn read the Christmas story. Commissioner Kaker is going to sing "Happy Birthday to Jesus" for us. Our county attorney is going to do first century law. And Commissioner Stover and Commissioner Harer are going to come down front and lead us in a line dance. And our county administrator is going to sing "Santa Claus is Coming to Town. You Better Watch Out, You Better Not Pout."
I think everybody would leave the meeting room if I did that, Mr. Chairman.
So seriously, I don't see Deborah. Are you here, Deborah? Oh, okay. But you're sitting behind a big guy there. So Deborah Opie with Pauling County, a Pauling County minister, is going to come and lead us in invocation, as is our tradition, and also the pledge stand if you're able.
Good morning.
Good morning.
May we pray. Father in heaven, we come before you, first of all, thanking you for being great, for being loving, for being kind, and for your patience with us. Father, as we gather together to make decisions for this county, Father, we pray that you would give us wisdom, that you would open up our understanding, give us an ear to hear what your Spirit is saying, that we may lead your people well. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. We declare that this holiday season will be a blessing to this county, to this state, to this country, and to this world. We thank you again for the privilege to serve. In Jesus' name we pray. May we say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Opie. That was so good. We'll dispense with the other things I mentioned. The minutes of the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one work session and the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one board meeting minutes are available for review.
We pray. May we say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe technical difficulties. We'll try our announcements. Team Pauling employee of the month is Senior Construction Inspector Bobby Smith with the Pauling Department of Transportation.
I am the Construction Division Manager for Pauling DOT. Bobby's role is to basically, he's the liaison with the contractor in order to make sure everything is done correctly. Ever since he came on with DOT, he's been super eager to learn. His work ethic is kind of second to none. Bobby, along with Ted Merrill, they both stepped up to work the night shifts. Generally, in a year, we only have maybe one or two weeks of night shifts. Well, this was more like five or six weeks. And he really, he really came through for us. You know, recently, they were raiding roads for upcoming paving projects, and there was two young ladies on the side of the road with a flat tire. And Bobby stopped and made sure that they got their tire changed, and you know, he changed their tire for them. And you know, oddly enough, he had some apple pies in the truck with him, and he gave the ladies an apple pie just to try to brighten their day a little bit. So he just has that energy about him. It's hard to be in a bad mood when you're around him.
Congratulations, Bobby Smith, and thank you for your work. We have an additional announcement this morning that pertains to the disaster from the tornadoes in several states, Kentucky primarily. So we're going to run that. There's a group in the county that's coming together to help the disaster folks.
There is no doubt that most everyone across our nation has seen the devastating impact that this past weekend's deadly tornadoes have had in western Kentucky. The Pauling County community has come together and united to help those who have been impacted by these deadly tornadoes. The Pauling County Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, Board of Commissioners, along with the Pauling County School District, North Georgia Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and many local businesses and churches have come together to bring relief to those who are suffering. Here are the following relief items that we are looking to have donated. Non-perishable food items, boxed food, paper products such as toilet paper, paper towels, paper plates, utensils and cups, cases and gallons of water, tarps, new blankets, AA batteries, C batteries, small propane bottles, baby wipes, diapers, baby items, formula, feminine hygiene products, toiletries, pet food, and trash bags. Here are the following drop-off locations for the relief items. Pauling County Schools, Pauling County Sheriff's Office, Pauling County Fire Stations, Mount Tabor Park, Taylor Farm Park, Burnt Hickory Park, Dallas Public Library, the Maude P. Ragsdale Public Library in Hiram, Crossroads Public Library, and New Georgia Public Library. Let's help those in Kentucky as they dig out from such a horrific tragedy.
Thank you, Jeff Harkins and your team for putting that together on such short notice. And I think we'll hear some more about it lately later. You want to go ahead?
Well, a last-minute suggestion from someone on the ground up there in Kentucky would add underwear and socks for men and women new as an additional need for up there.
Thank you. So we have, we have no special invited guests this morning. I guess we may have someone later, but we'll introduce them at that time. Under bid awards, item number two on the agenda is to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Pond and Company in the amount of $249,958.49 for a scoping study on State Route Six between Buchanan Highway and the Cobb County Line to develop project concepts that can be programmed to improve mobility, safety, and access to all modes of transportation on the corridor. Funds will be allocated through SPOST and federal funds. And Mr. George Jones to tell us more.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In a previous transportation improvement project competitive solicitation, the county was awarded $200,000, with also the county providing a 20% matching funds, $50,000 for a scoping study on State Route Six from Buchanan Highway to the Cobb County Line. The matching funds will come from SPOST. While this is a GDOT road, we feel it's in the best interest of the county to move forward and start the process for planning transportation projects on this corridor. It is the heaviest-traveled road in Pauling County. A request proposals was for the scoping study was advertised with seven firms submitting proposals. A project selection team of representatives from Pauling County DOT, the cities of Dallas and Hiram, and Georgia DOT District Six rated the proposals of those proposals. Two teams were shortlisted for oral interviews to determine their project team and suitability for this task. Based on the oral interviews and scores, the team of Pond and Company was selected as the team that was best qualified to lead this study. The project has a September twenty twenty-two completion date, and the total cost is $249,958.49. Again, we hope to get some projects to improve the flow of traffic on that roadway now and in the future. Obviously, with the way the county is projected to grow, it is, we're going to receive more traffic, so we need to start the planning process to program projects for that very important corridor.
Any questions? We've got good backup material, George, and let's see. We have you, we got Mr. Lyons to come up next, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So item number three is to approve software purchase in the amount of $739,275.51 to the lowest bidder, Crayon. Funding will be allocated through general funds by equal payments over a three-year period. Will, if you would move that microphone a little bit more right in front of you, I think everybody will be able to hear better. Thank you. And we do have Mr. Will Lyons, our IT director, to report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In October, October twenty-seventh, the finance opened bids for the renewal of our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. This agreement is a three-year Microsoft Server and Client License Entitlement to install Microsoft software on the servers and the workstations that are used across the county. Some examples of that is Windows 10, Microsoft Office, Windows Server, Windows SQL Server. We had one timely and responsible bidder, and that was Crayon Software Experts out of Dallas, Texas, in the amount of $739,275.51. This amount will be paid over budget years of 2022, 2023, and 2024 at the amount of $246,425.17 through the general fund. Without the renewal, we're going to be required to stay at our current version that's on the machines right now. And with time, that's going to present security risk because the vendor will no longer support it. We will also find ourselves in a position of incompatibility with the citizens and outside agencies. Note that any software versions that are installed without purchase are considered a violation and noncompliant with the Microsoft licensing structure, and therefore penalties per installation. I recommend the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement renewal be approved and purchased through the Crayon Software Experts out of Dallas, Texas. Any questions?
Will, you have an idea of why we only got one bid?
No, sir. We had one that was late from the incumbent provider that was awarded in 2018. We work with finance to advertise these bids publicly as many places as we can, but we can only get so many responses, you know, if they're willing to participate. I would like to see more parties participate as well, but I don't know what else we can do.
Comments? Does the enterprise software have to be updated?
I'm sorry.
How frequent does it have to be updated?
We update this every three years. This actually is about a ten-and-a-half percent increase from the 2018 agreement. Unfortunately, until we decide not to use software, they change the license structure, we're kind of in a cycle where we're going to have to repeat it every few years. This is volume pricing with volume discounts, so it's really the best way to go.
Thank you so much. Item number four is to approve the millwork package for State Court Room Number One to M&amp;N Millwork in the amount of $70,000. Funding will be allocated through the general funds. And Scott Green, our Director of Operations, to report.
Thank you. I'm coordinating this project with building maintenance. This is an interior finish project, so we're managing most of the work in-house and then contracting out the various pieces. This particular package is critical in the schedule. When bidding this project, we found that companies were too busy to take on more work. That's kind of a common thing now. We're fortunate that we had one excellent bidder that we're recommending to proceed forward with. This work will take about six weeks from this point to finish up towards the end of January, and we're optimistic if we award this now that we can keep our project generally on schedule. There are a lot of things going on right now that we're dealing with, and we've navigated most of those fairly well. I appreciate the effort that Jimmy's group has put into this. We couldn't do it without him. I certainly couldn't do it. So glad to take any of your questions. This is State Court One. We do have another project coming to you in January for State Court Two. It's basically critical that we get one of the courts operating before July one, and with a little luck, we'll have both of them fully completed.
And since we have a large group today and people watching online on TV, I wanted to ask our county administrator, who comes out of the court system, to, we've got a long agenda today, I think it'll be worthwhile to you for you to hear Frank discuss what the State Court will provide for Pauling County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that we've long needed here in Pauling County. I came in 2012 as the court administrator over all the courts, and Superior Court was handling everything, which included the traffic cases, misdemeanor cases, and of course, the felonies. This is going to provide a lot of efficiency to our system. It's going to allow the Superior Court judges to concentrate on the felony cases and the civil cases that are brought forward, and then it'll allow for a lot more efficiency to get to the misdemeanor cases. But state courts in Georgia are very, very active courts. In fact, I came from, at one time, the most active state court. I was Director of State Court in Cobb, and we were probably the most active court, had the most cases. They were very efficient, and they really helped the whole system, the whole justice system. So we're really looking forward to this, and it's coming along. There are a lot of moving pieces to this. A lot of folks, this is really Team Pauling at its best. A lot of folks were working on this, including judges, a lot of support personnel, building maintenance. Scott Green's leading the charge on, as y'all just heard from him. And we should have everything up and running. The court is scheduled to be open July first pursuant to the change in the state law. So we're excited about it. It's going to be extremely efficient for our county and long overdue.
Thanks, Frank.
Frank, can you speak to the need as far as a case, from a case log perspective?
Your high-volume areas are your traffic cases where law enforcement officers are writing tickets, and then you have a lot of misdemeanor cases. You're going to have more misdemeanor cases in that higher volume is there. So those are cases that are being sent right now over to the Superior Court. If they're bound over from the cities, they're going to Superior Court. This is going to allow that, those cases to be freed up, to be sent to an independent court, a state court, and it's much more efficient. They'll be able to get to these in a very, very expedient way rather than them sitting on dockets. The example that I like to give is that during a court session right now, if we have what's called a plea counter, if somebody's coming in to plead guilty, you could have somebody that's up there on a traffic case, like a red light case, that's pleading guilty in front of the Superior Court judge, and the next case could be a felony drug case. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. It can be done more efficiently, and so that's what we're striving to do with this. So we're very, very excited about it. It's going to be a great day for Pauling County.
Just add one more 30 seconds on, since the courthouse was built with extra space that has not been built out, how it's a savings because that, that structure was there that would accommodate these courts, these two state courts.
Well, absolutely. We refer to them as shelled areas, and so the courthouse was built a few years before I came over from Cobb, but there was some empty space for courtrooms. There was two, two empty shell areas, so those are being developed right now. We're building both of those out at today's prices rather than waiting, and also a suite of offices for a judge, a judge currently that would be coming on board, and for future growth, because we know that in a few years, there's going to be a need to expand the court, so it makes sense to go ahead and do that now at today's prices. So we're just about, after this project, so we're going to be just about built out, but it did save a lot of money not having to build onto the building instead of just doing an internal rehab. So we're excited about that, too. So we have saved a lot of money in that respect.
Thank you, Frank. Moving on to item number five, which is to approve the purchase of a single-axle dump truck from Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $108,344 to be used by the Department of Transportation. And you're going to be seeing a lot of Ms. Pollard on the next few agenda items.
We did try to get quite a few budget items, so of the next few, there, most of them have, they were approved in the budget process this year. This is just approving the purchasing procedures. So this one was bid out and accepted the state contract from Peach State Truck Centers, and it is for a freightliner dump truck in the amount of $108,344 for DOT.
Questions on item number five? Pushing ahead to number six is approve the purchase of a pipe jetter from the lowest bidder, P&amp;H Supply Incorporated, in the amount of $70,000, also for the Department of Transportation.
This one, we received bids, three bids, and recommending award to the lowest bidder, P&amp;H Supply, in the amount of $70,000.
I read the backup, George. Is this mainly just to clean, like rotor ruder out our stormwater pipes?
Exactly, yeah, clean out pipes, that type of thing. Absolutely. What is used for?
I was going to ask the same question.
A pipe jetter. Okay, item number seven is to approve the purchase of an excavator from Yancey Brothers in the amount of $348,000 to be used also for the Department of Transportation.
This one, we received three bids. The 348 is the mid-range. It's the middle one. It had a few upgrades from the lowest bidder, and one of the main ones was the 360 visual turn, and then they were able to, it better met their needs. DOT can talk about what, how it better met their needs.
Anybody want to hear about that? Everybody spooled up, read up? Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Approve the purchase of an F-550 to the lowest bidder, Hardy Family Ford, in the amount of $51,055 for the stormwater department to use. Ms. Pollard?
This one's a little simpler. It's for a 550 for stormwater. We did take the state contract, and Hardy bid against the state contract, and we're recommending award to Hardy in the amount of $51,055. That compared to state contract in the amount of $51,079, so it was a little less.
Sounds like we're good on that one. Number nine is to approve the renovations of the Burnt Hickory Playground to include design, equipment, and installation of 100% ADA accessible playground to the lower bidder, Bliss products and services in the amount of $374,287.15. Funds will be allocated through SPOST. This project, of course, is located at Burnt Hickory Park in Post Four.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you see, this is a, it's a playground renovation, but it's more than a renovation. It's new structures. And what we're doing here with the structures, we're addressing the needs of our adaptive recreation participants, those that may not get to experience the whole playground structure because of whatever limitations they may have. This structure is completely ramped. There's accessible components on the ground and on those ramps. There's a bunch of them, you know, along with this. Then if you're familiar with that playground up there, half of it is poured-in-place surfacing and half of it is mulch. It's part of this project, and all that mulch is going away. The entire surface will be poured in place, which makes the, the whole area, we're increasing the area from, I think, 6,500 to about 8,500 square feet, so that whole area will be accessible by chair, stroller, what have you, with no mulch getting in the way of that. So we're excited about it. We did advertise. We received four bids, and those bids ranged from the low that you see there, $374,287.15, to a high bid of a little over $537,000. So we recommend the, you guys consider awarding to the low bidder for the listed amount. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Michael, really glad to see this project come on, but could you talk, I mean, just a minute about the field that's up there now, that, just for maybe the new citizens in the county that may, may not know about the?
Sure. I'd be glad to. And one thing that I, that I need to highlight, and thank you for allowing me the time to remember, getting older, I tend to forget things from time to time. It's listed there as 100% ADA accessible. That is the case. It has to be the case with any playground structure that we have. All those are there now. The wording that needs to be used there to make it more understandable is inclusive, you know? So there has to be some elements of every playground, of every structure that we do that are accessible, but the inclusive is going to allow the opportunity for the whole thing, sorry, the whole thing to be used. At that same park, you may or may not be familiar, that's where our Adaptive Recreation Program is kind of headquartered, and fortunately, and we still thank you guys for it, you approved the construction of a field that's synthetic turf that we've made a few more changes to, adding some thicker pads underneath, that sort of thing. Our adaptive baseball program plays there. It's expanded to soccer, to introductory lacrosse, that sort of thing. And it is designed, although it's synthetic turf, sometimes when you walk on those, and there's some restrictions as far as rolling across it and things of that nature. You approved some extra padding and some extra elements to that that kind of firm it up a little bit, that allow those kids to get out there. I say kids, kids and adults, to get out there and enjoy that and participate in some recreation programs. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. You'll probably hear from me and the rest of the board over the next 11 or 12 months talking about renewal of SPOST. This is an example of what the SPOST, the acronym for Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, which is that extra penny on a dollar that gets split up with law enforcement improvements, you know, the vests that our sheriff's officer deputies wear to recreational pieces, to DOT. But we'll be talking a lot more about renewing that because it's been very valuable to the county as far as improvements without actually increasing millage rate or increasing property tax. Item number 10 is authorize the chairman to approve the purchase of a metal storage building to Carolina Carpets, I'm sorry, Carports, in the amount of $52,257.20 for the Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Again, this is a budgeted, a budgeted project that was approved in the '22 budget, and it will construct an 80 by 40 pole barn and metal storage building to cover the equipment materials and trailers for DOT. And we received three bids and recommending award to the lowest bidder.
Is this included in this delegation also?
If you didn't see the head nod from DOT, it's affirmative. No questions. Okay, that completes our consent agenda items. I'm sorry, the, the bid awards. Today, we have no reports from committees and departments, no public participation signatures for agenda items. We have some later on, a non-agenda item. End of the consent agenda, which includes item which includes item number eleven is to approve the rate increase allowed by the haul and disposal contract with BFI Transfer Systems of Georgia and Republic Services of Georgia with a four point five four percent increase effective December first, twenty-twenty-one. Item number twelve is to adopt updated policy for drug and alcohol testing policy, the zero tolerance policy. Item number thirteen is to adopt government buildings job classification for plumber. Number fourteen is to adopt sheriff's office job classification for senior detention and a senior, I guess that'd be senior detention officer and senior deputy. And I would ask the post commissioners if any, would you like to place any of these items on regular business for the afternoon discussion and voting? Hearing no requests for that, we'll move on to old business, which we don't have any, and we'll move right into new business. Uh, item number fifteen and sixteen, um, are going to be handled together. Um, number fifteen is discuss action to adopt resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight requesting the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County, Georgia to approve the issuance of revenue anticipation certificates by the Paulding County Hospital Authority. Uh, both of these new business items will be covered by, by Matt McCabe, who's at the podium now, counsel for Wellstar. So I'll just move on and read number sixteen. Well, you want, you want to just cover fifteen first, Matt?
Sure, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd also like to thank Mr. Baker, Mr. Phillips for communicating with me to have the opportunity to be here in front of you. So these two items that we're going to discuss relate to, uh, hospital facilities that Wellstar Health System with this county's assistance has constructed for the benefit of this community. The first is solely a resolution that's required under section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code, and all it is, is so that the bonds can bear interest at a tax-exempt rate. Uh, the resolution relating to number fifteen is to refund some bonds that were issued by the Paulding County Hospital Authority in two thousand and twelve, which were used to build the nice facility just four miles down the road that we call Wellstar Paulding Hospital. Uh, and those bonds would be refunded for savings for Wellstar Health System to lower the interest cost. And so Wellstar is seeking the approval of this body as the applicable elected representative in order to issue those bonds in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight million dollars. And just to make clear, those bonds are the sole liability of Wellstar Health System, Inc. There is no liability to the county, the city of Hiram, or Dallas. Uh, it is purely a responsibility of Wellstar Health System, Inc. And so that is, uh, item fifteen, resolution twenty-one thirty-eight, and happy to answer any questions on that one.
Item number sixteen is discuss action to adopt resolution twenty-one dash thirty-nine requesting the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County, Georgia to approve the issuance of revenue anticipation certificates by the Cobb County Kennistone Hospital Authority. So give us anything different on that, Matt, and we'll ask questions about both of them at once.
That's great. So the second one relates to a series of revenue anticipation certificates that were issued by Cobb County Kennistone Hospital Authority in two thousand and twelve. Some of those bonds were used to fund, uh, facilities that were in Paulding County. In fact, just one million dollars or so of facilities that were used to fund Wellstar Paulding Nursing Center, as well as a bit of the new hospital. And so because those bonds were issued to fund some facilities, albeit a small amount within this county, the applicable elected representative under the tax code also has to approve those bonds as well. And so it's about a hundred million of refunding bonds that would be issued by Cobb County Kennistone Hospital Authority. And again, just like the Paulding County Hospital Authority revenue anticipation certificates, there would be no liability for Paulding County or any of the municipal, uh, subdivisions of the state that relate to the bonds, purely a debt and obligation of Wellstar Health System, Inc.
Everybody understand all that? Any questions? We really appreciate your being here and, and taking the time out of your schedule to, to let us know. It's not something we deal with every day.
Yeah. Well, this is more fun than my desk job, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Matt, let me, let me just clarify one thing. When you say refunding, for the rest of us, that means a refinance.
Exactly. We, in the revenue anticipation certificate space, we call it a refunding. Uh, that's just the term used under tax law. And so it's just like if you refinance your mortgage, they're refunding the bonds that were used to build those facilities. So thank you for the question.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
New business item seventeen is discuss action to adopt ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine amending chapter six of the official Paulding County Code to provide for the issuance of wine manufacturing licenses and to update the brewery production quantity limits consistent with state law. And call on the Mr. Jason Phillips, our county attorney, to explain.
Commissioners, as you are aware, we offer a number of alcohol licenses and permits in the county. Uh, one of which we do not have is a wine manufacturing license. So this simply amends the code of the county to create a procedure whereby people that may be interested in manufacturing wine on a commercial basis have an avenue to do so in the county. Without this license, they would not be able to do it. Typically, what you see on a license like this is somebody in a commercial space, a manufacturing space, who's making, uh, and, and bottling the wine for distribution to wholesalers. This is not to be confused with what we call a farm winery, which we do have procedures for, and we do have farm wineries in this county. Uh, but this is for a winery that does not involve growing your own grapes on site. It also increases some production limits on breweries to simply bring us up to date with state law, which changed this last year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Number eighteen is discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the completion of the twenty-twenty-one asphalt contract, number one. Funding for this work will be allocated from SPOST. Mr. Jones?
The county awarded CW Matthews the two thousand and twenty-one through-road paving contract in April twenty-twenty-one at an amount of three point nine seven million dollars. Um, that work consisted of eight roads of fourteen point zero nine miles. During the through-road contract, the asphalt conditions, particularly on Dallas-Aquarith Highway, Lake Road, and Graham Road, were in worse condition than originally estimated. Um, that resulted in very large overruns in terms of deep patching, a significant cost overrun. Based on those overruns, um, staff felt, and I agree, that it was best to rap versus deep patch, do a complete milling, and then pave with two inches versus the deep patching. That resulted in a cost savings. However, we still overran the original contract amount by four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, which is roughly ten percent of the original contract. So we're requesting the board approve this contract allotment increase for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which will be allotted from SPOST funding.
Questions? Sounds to me like you're just assessing and doing it right.
Exactly. You know, again, if the goal was to stay within the contract limits, we could have done that. However, the asphalt wouldn't have lasted longer. The goal is obviously to have a asphalt surface that lasts as long as it can, so.
Okay. So, uh, item number nineteen is also, uh, Mr. Jones, discuss action authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application of the Georgia Department of Transportation fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG we call it, in the amount of one billion, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, and the required thirty percent match funds of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and six dollars and eighty-seven cents. The match funding will be allocated through general funds.
Okay. The L-MIG program is funded from the state motor fuel, um, tax collection. The L-MIG grants each city or county receives is based on the, um, city slash county, in our case, county, road mileage and population versus the total amount of roads in the state and state population. Um, Paulding County, based on that formula amount, this year will receive one point nine five, nine-five-four million dollars in L-MIG funding. By law, the county is required to provide a thirty percent match. Like you said, those funds um, equal five hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, which I requested to come out of general funds. We plan on utilizing the L-MIG for road paving, which we traditionally do. Um, the project list includes six roads. To receive the funds, we're required to complete an application containing the work to be accomplished, a project list, cost estimate, and anticipated let date. Um, we're not held or committed to this list. We can change it at any time. We just have to provide written notification to GDOT that we wish to change it. Um, we have to provide this application by February first, twenty-twenty-two, or we risk losing those funds. So this is simply a, a housekeeping item, making sure we get this to y'all and approve it. And again, we feel the board needs to, um, approve this because we're asking the chairman to, um, basically, um, sign for funds that are over fifty thousand dollars. So I felt this is important to get to y'all.
George, re-educate me. The motor fuel tax on a, is it per gallon of gas? Is it a percentage, or?
I believe it is, sir, Chairman. So again, a few years back, um, GDOT, they revised how they, um, I think, I can't remember, was it one-seventy? I think House Bill one-seventy, and they basically went through and allocated, um, additional taxes towards, um, transportation projects in Georgia. And this here, again, is collected by GDOT, and they dole this out to the applicable cities and counties in the state.
Any other questions? So we're at item number twenty, which is discuss action to adopt resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six, authorizing the submission of the Transportation Improvement Program Grant. Uh, these applications will be to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the following four proposed projects. The Dallas-Aquarith Highway from State Route ninety-two to Mount Tabor Church Road, the East Paulding Drive, uh, from State Route one-twenty to west of Brooks-Rackley Road, the Cedar Crest Road from State Route ninety-two to Seven Hills Boulevard, the State Route one-twenty, which is also called Charles-Harty Parkway, from the Cobb County line to State Route six slash US two-seventy-eight. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Jones to tag team on this one.
Uh, the Atlanta Regional Commission, of which Paulding is a part of for transportation purposes, opened a transportation improvement project, otherwise known as TIP solicitation, um, on October first, twenty-twenty-one, to receive applications for transportation projects from the regions, cities, counties, organizations. And, um, the goal of the project was to move up, accelerate the timeframe for projects which support the transportation's, um, region's transportation plan. Applications were due by December second. Again, as you had stated, we submitted four projects for funding. Um, Dallas-Aquarith widening from Mount Tabor Church Road to State Route ninety-two, a State Route one-twenty Charles-Harty Parkway scoping study from, um, US two-seventy-eight to the Cobb County line, and East Paulding Drive scoping study from SR one-twenty Charles-Harty Parkway to west of Reese Road, and also, um, Cedar Crest Road widening project from State Route ninety-two to Seven Hills Boulevard. The requested grant funding totals eight point eight million dollars. The county would be required to provide, um, twenty percent matching funds. That would equal two point two million dollars. The total cost with the grant and the county match would be eleven million dollars. If we received all funding requests, we will not receive all funding requests. Um, we typically, um, receive anywhere from zero to one or two. So again, we have to put our, um, name in the hat before we're going to get any funding. So we have to participate when they do have these call for projects and provide projects, um, to receive any funding. Um, as part of the process, the Atlanta Regional Commission now requires the application to be accompanied by resolutions from the local governing body, basically supporting the project. So they want to be sure that, um, these projects, you know, if awarded to, um, cities, counties, they're supported and will be funded. The resolutions are due by, to the Atlanta Regional Commission by December thirty-first of this year.
So there are people in the room or, or watching online, uh, and their road did not get selected. You want to, uh, suggest how they're graded?
Um, in this case, we looked at projects, um, that are, you know, are supported by the local governing authority, which typically are, um, noted in the comprehensive transportation plan, um, are in the, um, our SPOST program. Projects like that have been vetted. Um, we also look at, you know, not for this particular solicitation, but we do take open, um, requests for any type of projects. Again, people sometimes know more about, um, their particular area than we do in terms of, you know, if a roadway widening project is needed or an intersection project. But, um, these projects basically have, already have, um, noted support from the Board of Commissioners.
Any other questions? Moving on to item twenty-one, discuss action to approve the action planned amendment for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three to include eligible users of demolition and rehabilitation. Ms. Pollard?
This is a grant that we've been working with since two thousand and eleven. We have used this grant, um, early on to purchase abandoned properties, um, foreclosed properties, and rehab those properties and turn them around, um, to a, um, a lower-income family that was, uh, to purchase the HUD property. We've helped, or we have, um, participated in twelve rehab properties. We've provided homeowners assistance to fourteen, the, um, fourteen homeowners. The grant itself was one point three million dollars. When these properties are bought, they're sold. That's called program income. It goes back into the program. We've generated about seven hundred thousand dollars in program income. So overall, we've had about two million dollars. We have about four hundred and twenty-five thousand remaining. Um, foreclosures and abandoned properties are harder to grab now. So we've, we are asking to add the, um, eligible uses of demolition, and instead of rehabilitation, that should be redevelopment. We already, we already have rehabilitation. Um, so we're redeveloping the property for a residential use. And hopefully, this will open up some more avenues for us to be able to use these funds. We're restricted, um, on the use of the funds because Paulding is HUD divides into census blocks. Those census blocks have to, the income level in those census blocks has to be a below, at or below an adjusted median income. And so it depends on not just that, that particular area or home, it's the area of the county. So it does limit us a little bit. The way it would work is the, like, if we demo, demolished a blotted property, then we would have a lien against the property. And when that lien is collected, then we would, in turn, that would be program income, and it would go back into the program. So the program will continue to be ongoing. This was just an opportunity to be able to, um, add a couple of eligible uses.
Do we ever hear about who, what citizens get to use this opportunity?
Um, I have a list. Well, actually, I don't have names. I have addresses, but I don't, I don't know the, um, and let me go back to Northwest Georgia Regional Commission assisted us in this early on. And then we were, we used up our admin funds, um, during the process of those fourteen. And so they administered this grant for the first eight years of it. And then, um, now Paulding County is administering, trying to close it out.
But will it ever close out?
I don't think so.
Gift that keeps giving, Anna.
The gift that keeps giving.
So it's primarily you and Ms. Lippman, it's community development that have been working on this. I remember when we went over to the Housing Authority.
Right. We're looking for different areas. So again, it takes the, the map of Paulding, divides it into census blocks. Um, we're looking for residential areas that we can possibly find foreclosures or abandoned properties. Uh, we're looking for blotted structures. We're looking for anything that can be used. The main requirement, again, once we meet the, um, The main requirement, again, once we meet the income level, is that it's residential use.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, I get involved with, on the court side of getting orders to demolish these structures. Typically, what happens is you see a home that is several years delinquent on payment of taxes. It's typically falling in. Oftentimes, rodent infested because the owners have either moved away or passed away, and nobody's taking care of the structure anymore. We do them from time to time, and we go out and, it costs money to demolish these structures. It's taxpayer money. So this is a great resource to have, to replenish those tax dollars, at least using these funds to make up for, and these are situations where nobody wants to step in and do it because it costs money to do it. So you're only left with the government, with the resources that willing to step in and, and do it because it's the right thing, both from a public safety perspective and from a, just looks a lot better after these wrecks are destroyed.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Okay, let's see, we're down to number 20, 22. Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 21-37 Authorizing the Chairman to Sign the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority Loan Document Providing Funding to Extend Sanitary Sewer Lines and Related Appertainances. Ms. Pollard.
Several months ago, Ms. Ashmore brought to you an ARC grant that was $600,000, and it was for the installation of Hiram sewer lines. The project was just under $1.8 million, and so this will provide, allow us to use Jifa money at 0% interest rate for five years to complete the installation of those sewer lines.
Questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to 23. Thank you, Ms. Pollard, so much for all of those agenda items, covering them well. And so we move into Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 21-40 Imposing a Moratorium on the Acceptance of Residential Subdivision Rezoning Request. Ms. Lippman, the Director of Community Development.
Thank you, everyone. We are in the middle of completing one major project and starting on another major project. We are almost finished with our Unified Development Ordinance, which will include our zoning ordinance. Previously this year, we, we created with that project eight, I think, new zoning districts, five of which were commercial. They have already been incorporated into our zoning ordinance. We have three new residential or mixed-use districts, and we have tweaked some of the existing residential districts. And that being the project we are about to complete, we are beginning our partial update to our comprehensive plan. And one of the new features in our zoning ordinance is we are linking every zoning district to an area on our future development map. And since we are completing one project and getting started on another, we are asking for, it technically turns out to be a 74-day moratorium, we are asking for it to expire on March 1st, 2022, to allow planning and zoning staff to dot all our i's and cross our t's on our UDO, and to get underway on our comprehensive plan update so we can get as much of those two merged together. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, I can imagine the undertaking of the transition, so. I know moratoriums are tough to do sometimes. I mean, it's 74 days, so surely we can live with it. But I want to thank all your staff and for all the work for the last three years on this. So very smart to come up with a moratorium to make sure y'all have time to actually spend on it, because I know the, the growth in the county and applications left and right that y'all just swamped. So thank you for bringing this in front of us.
And just want to make it clear, this does not prevent anyone from rezoning to agricultural or to R2. This really only affects anything that would be a residential subdivision.
Thanks so much, Ms. Lippman. Item 24 is to Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 21-41 Authorizing Annual Water and Sewer Rate Increases Through 2026. You're not Ms. Ashmore.
We'll both do it.
Okay.
I'd hate to keep her from having this much fun. This is probably the most fun item on the agenda for us today. In 2017, we, or 2016, we passed a resolution for water rates, and we set those rates for five years at a time, and it was based on Cobb Marietta water rate. And it was 4.75% above what the Cobb Marietta rate was going to be for each year. Over the past few years, the Cobb Marietta rate wasn't what we thought it would be at that time, and so our rates aren't to where we thought they would be when we would be sitting in this seat after the reservoir was completed and we were beginning to treat our own water. So what we're asking for today is another five-year plan. We're going to show you where we were. If you look at this graph in the orange was where we were supposed to be, where we thought we would be. No, I'm sorry. Where, the orange is where we, where we're asking, where we will be when we do these rates. The blue dotted line is where we, are the current rates and where we would be. So you have the, we have to cover operating expenses. These rates are, we have to have a debt coverage ratio. In that debt coverage ratio, first, we got to cover our operating expenses, and then we have to be able to cover our debt service. And, and then you have projects that are anticipated on top of that. If we have a covenant that says in our debt coverage ratio that we will maintain 1.2% of, I mean, coverage ratio, so your debt, you have to maintain a revenue of 1.2, 120% of your debt to cover that payment. And that's what we're proposing today, is that there, that the rate increase go from 2.5 for this year and next year, and then it's reduced to 1.5, and then it's reduced to 1 in the final year. So if Jeff can go to the next slide, please. This is the slide I was looking for, or what I was mentioning earlier. The, the last forecast in the green line is where we actually predicted that our water rates would be, water and sewer rates would be if you combined a water bill and a sewer bill. So this particular one are for the customers that have water and sewer. The 2022 gives you an indication of what that 2.5% will do to a, to a water bill compared to where we originally anticipated back in 2016. But we're, are, we are able, we will be able to, to, to work with the 2.5 and make the debt coverage ratio and be able to provide the Pago projects as we had anticipated.
Ms. Ashmore, do you want to add anything?
Do you want to add anything? One more thing that we are recommending that we do a five-year, but we have a lot of things, as we get further into treatment and establish what those costs of treatment's going to be, we may be back in it next year, we may be back the year after telling you, you know, recommending a change to this. This is just the plan as we see it today.
Are these numbers taking consideration of funds that came from the federal government for the ARPA funds or whatever?
Yes. This number would be bigger had we, because we would be looking at a large debt issue in 2022 or the early part of 2023, had it not been for those funds. Do you have anything to add, Lori?
Just wanted to add that this does not include also our grant, the grant applications that we've submitted. If we get some of those dollars, that will improve that financial position. We are seeing continued increases in costs and supply chain issues, which lead to that uncertainty that Tabitha was mentioning. And so we'll be monitoring all of this very closely.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard, Ms. Ashmore. And we finally get to item number 25, which is Discuss Action to Approve the Sanitary Sewer Service to be Provided by the City of Dallas to Parcel 149.4, .1, .1, .011 within the Paulding Service, Sewer Service area until such time that county gravity sewer service is available to the property, Ms. Ashmore, and that this project, or this area is post one.
We are bringing you a recommendation this morning on this, on this parcel that is slated for residential development in the city of Dallas. It has a, as part of our service delivery strategy, we have defined areas where the city of Dallas provides sewer and defined areas where we provide the service. They're generally drawn along ridge lines. In this case, this parcel is on the east side of Highway 61, and Dallas serves the west side of, of Highway 61 and north of Hay Renfro. And so we are, our closest sewer to serve this project is three miles away by gravity. They have a manhole, the city of Dallas has a manhole just north of Hay Renfro Road. And so we are, we're recommending that we allow, that the board allow the city of Dallas to serve sewer to this property until such time that the county has gravity sewer service available.
Anybody got that? Thank you, Ms. Ashmore. That is the conclusion of regular business. We do have individuals that have signed up to speak. Just have one signed up, Ms. England, that signed up to speak on non-agenda, non-agenda And so I'll ask Ms. England to come forward, please. And I'll ask the county, the county clerk, what's, what's the time? Five minutes?
Thank you, Rebecca.
What makes you say that?
You look like you're ready to.
We are ready to go. We got our paddle, we got the ball, we're ready to play. Everybody from pickleball. Woo! Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Denise England, and I am your Paulding County Pickleball Ambassador. I'm here to introduce you to pickleball and to submit a request to build pickleball courts at the Mount Tabor Park. Thank you to those who came to support today, as well as Mr. Alex Wilson. Thank you so much for your help in helping us grow pickleball in the Paulding County. Going to do a quick, one-minute video here.
Finally, tonight, if you're like me, the older you get, the better you were as an athlete back in the day. But most folks still feel they have a lot of fight left.
Just a second. If you could show that on the screen. We may have to get Jeff to show this on the screen. Jeff, can you see the computer?
Okay. You just have to go out of the power link, too.
Finally, tonight, if you're like me, the older you get, the better you were as an athlete back in the day. But most folks still feel they have a lot of fight left in them, even if they can't.
Have to close it out?
There it is.
Finally, tonight, if you're like me, the older you get, the better you were as an athlete back in the day. But most folks still feel they have a lot of fight left in them, even if they can't cover as much ground as quickly as back in the day. That may explain the rise of a sport that is growing quickly in popularity. If you've heard of pickleball or you already play it, then you know. If you've never heard of something called pickleball, you're about to get a crash course in a fast-growing activity from NBC's Mark Potter.
If the pickleball craze has not yet hit your town, stand by. It's on its way. Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in America and can be played by just about anyone, including 91-year-old Lee Kritzler vying for a medal at a pickleball tournament in Delray Beach, Florida.
It gives you exercise. It's fun, social, and it's competitive.
Although it's exploded recently, pickleball was invented almost 50 years ago near Seattle, a combination of tennis, badminton, and ping pong. It's played with a paddle and a wiffle ball on a short court, which attracts older players who can still win without having to run too far.
You can compete with the younger people by using your.
Thank you so much. All right, so we're going to go back to the presentation. Who put me on pause? I've only got five minutes. It's not stressful. All right, so we got Shaw Park in Cobb County. They've converted two of their tennis courts into six pickleball courts with two additional courts for a total of eight dedicated pickleball courts. At Oregon Park in Cobb County, they've converted two tennis courts as well into six dedicated pickleball courts. It's grown so fast that this location is often full with 24 players while 20 players are waiting to play. Noonan has 15 dedicated courts. Downtown Rome has converted two tennis courts into six dedicated pickleball courts, and they're currently discussing don't create any even more. Towns County, Georgia Mountain Pickleball has 14 dedicated courts on this beautiful view of the lake. We got some information. We got the economical impact for a tournament back in 2019 from one of those tournaments. Y'all can look in those detail later, since we're restricted on time. Griffin has 18 dedicated courts. They hold some of the largest pickleball tournaments here in the state of Georgia. We got some information from Peter Phelps, from the Paulding County, Spalding County Pickleball Association that we can go over in great detail more, that specifically says how it has affected their active lifestyle there, exercise and fitness and health and well-being, as well as the huge positive impact that it has had on his community down in Spalding County. How we doing on time? Okay. Pickleball has proven to be a huge game changer, a genuine local economical impact in the millions, a huge quality-of-life changer. Pickleball at Mount Tabor with the help of Mr. Alex Wilson. We have some of the tennis courts lined for pickleball there. We currently have 35 to 45 pickleball players there every week. We have, we hold weekly free clinics as well as a free ladder league as well, as you can see from those beautiful group of pickleball players there. The courts at Mount Tabor are currently in rough shape and are in dire need of repair. As of right now, there's a beautiful land plot available at Mount Tabor by the tennis courts. There's enough space for 12 pickleball courts to be constructed. We recommend on starting six pickleball courts and to eventually to expand to 12. Why do we want pickleball, dedicated pickleball courts? We want to eliminate the scheduling conflicts by no longer having to share with courts with the tennis. The net has a different height for tennis than pickleball. It is also a short.
The net has a different height for tennis than pickleball, is also a shorter net as well from end to end. Playing on a tennis net does not allow for special pickleball shots. Players prefer to play on a dedicated court. Players from different counties will travel to parks that have dedicated courts, as well as it will attract sponsors and players from all of special events, tournaments, which will increase the economical impact significantly. Cost analysis for Mount Tabor to convert the current courts as well as fix those current tennis courts is going to be $82,000 around. And then to build six dedicated courts specifically from the ground up is only $84,000. With a cost difference of about $1,500, we would like to recommend building from the ground up to eliminate the need to convert the current tennis courts, therefore not affecting any of the current or future tennis programs. On a side note, running a small tournament of 100 players on a weekend can bring upwards of $7,500 per tournament. Therefore, if six tournaments were held per year, your return on investment would be less than two years. How'd I do? Yes! Any questions?
Where did the sport get the name pickleball?
That is very good. That was in the video. There is a small controversy, but the main one was their owners had a dog named Pickles, and therefore they called the game pickleball.
How many people in the room play?
A lot of these people come from other counties just to come play. I travel 45 minutes to an hour just to find a dedicated court. These guys, they bring in a lot of money from the other counties that we come and eat, we come and spend money for gas. We love the dedicated courts, the tournaments. People from ages five up to, you know, 90 can play together. It's a huge family sport. It has saved my life. I was, I was an alcoholic before this. I've lost 40 pounds, and as soon as I found pickleball, it has, it has changed my life significantly. Bipolar, depressed, it has just saved my life. No medication, no alcohol, no nothing. Now, it's four years now.
I'm glad you're here.
Any questions? Can we get you guys to come out and play?
It was a great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Really appreciate that.
You say your name, Danine?
Danine England.
Danine?
Guarantee it, I lose four things.
I guarantee it. We'll all be there, won't we?
Yes.
I've seen you play indoors at Mount Tabor.
Yes, sir. We prefer outdoors because with no air conditioning and the ladies is a little rough. I ran out of questions for the Pickleball Facebook page. We started about four years ago. We now have over 2,000 members on the page.
Does everybody know the name Michael Justice? Sitting over to your right with a tie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just tell you, we listen to him.
So I guess our question is now, what's next? We, on the process?
I just gave you a hint.
Hi, Michael, my new best friend. Thank you for having me.
Alex, too. Alex is awesome.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Alex.
All right, folks, that's the conclusion of our non-agenda items. So as we begin a tradition, if you've got comments or something you want to celebrate or just announcements here on the panel, the floor's yours.
I want to thank Trent Tibbetts for providing community development with a copy of this book. It has all the cemeteries in Paulding County. And the reason that this started was we were looking for a cemetery in post two out by the airport and was wondering if it was on airport property or not. Well, it come to find out with the help of this book that it was not on airport property, which is a great thing. But we just want to thank him for, for providing us with this book. The Paulding County Historical Society, and it's an invaluable resource to us now. I don't think anybody even knew that this book existed until Trent brought it over. So thanks, Trent.
Thank you, Sandy.
Speaking of books about history of Paulding County, for anyone interested, there's a book called Black Horsemen. It speaks of the old, back in the Civil War days of Paulding County and the Jones family. I read version one years and years ago and not been able to come across it again because someone let me borrow it at the time. But just a few weeks ago, I was actually in Elrod Nursery, and version two has came out. A woman named Pat Harden, I think she's about mid-'90s, has written it, or wrote it. And so I asked Sam if he could get his hands on the first version of it, because it's very interesting. It's basically like history of Paulding County. So I saw that they did come in, so he's got both versions of it. If anyone had liked to get it, and I'd like to actually get copies of it, maybe to put in our archives, because it really is very interesting read of the old Paulding County and Dallas and stuff like that. So the Jones family, they're rough. They're rough.
You say you can't find it now, except for this?
Elrod's has got it now. Yeah, I mean, I looked for years and years, but it just, like I said, I was in there the other day, a few weeks ago, and it was just laying on the counter, so. And he actually reached out to her and had to guarantee at least 100 copies for her to get the publisher to publish it, at least 100 copies. So for anyone that'd like to have them, or cares anything about Paulding County history, get a good read.
Anyone else?
Merry Christmas.
What are you growing there, Keith? You going to be Santa Claus?
I have to get one of the, they go in the car.
Yeah. Well, I'll close out. You know, this is the last meeting of the year. We're going to meet at 2 o'clock to vote, but usually that's pretty short and sweet, and there's more people here. And, you know, it's been a difficult 2021 with all the pandemic considerations and everything. And our staff, I just feel like our board is so blessed to have such a wonderful staff. So end of the year is a good time for me to say how much we appreciate you. And if you would take back to your, the people that are, that work for you and express the same, considering all the things that we've been through in 2021, we've gotten a lot done, and I'm so very grateful. So that's what I'd like to say. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
David's got executive session.
Yeah, we need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of real estate.
And a motion by Commissioner Stover is our second. Second by Commissioner Hart. All is in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned to executive session.
Thank you.
I'll call regular session back to order and ask if there's any additional business that need to hear about. Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Hart, so second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stover. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.